Here.
Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Mr. Strath.
Here.
Mr. Tagle.
Here.
All right, item number two, approval of the agenda. Mr. Schultz?
The agenda is prepared. Mr. Chairman?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Krent.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Shafkey?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Strath?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Item three, the minutes from our September tenth, two thousand thirteen, regular meeting. Any questions, comments, or do I have a motion?
I'll make motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Shafkey?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Strath?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
All right, item number four is public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we move to number five, zoning board of appeals report.
We had two items. They're both approved. They're very minor approvals, one foot and a actually a lot of detail, but it was a angled lot, so it varied between no variance needed to a four-foot variance needed, but both of them were approved.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Krent? All right, item number six, downtown development authority report.
There was no meeting this month, so there's nothing to report. Actually, that is my report. That's not what to report.
All right, item number seven, Mr. Savinat will give you another opportunity to tell us about the planning and zoning report.
You recall last study meeting, we had a potential project, potential PUD in the Northfield area, mixed-use development, and there was a press release that was put out by the owner of the property prior to the meeting, and got a lot of publicity, and I've continued to feel the steady stream of phone calls, emails, questions in person. I talked to the potential applicant today, said he was soliciting potential engineers to work on the application, submit an application, so we haven't received an application yet. I did strongly encourage him to not release another press release until after we had an application, because I said, what happens is, I can't be informative, because there's no application. I don't know what's going on, so when someone from the press calls or a resident calls, I've got nothing. So, he agreed that he wouldn't release another press release until after we had an application, so that's my report.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing?
Yes.
Mr. Savinat's report. No one's been to Maple and Laverne recently. Kmart is a pile of rubble.
It's moving. It's moving. All right, nothing else, we'll move on to item eight, which is a postponed item. It's a special use and preliminary site plan review, file number SU four oh nine, proposed faith Lutheran church, west side of Dequinder, north of Big Beaver. The address is thirty-seven, six thirty-five, Dequinder, section twenty-four, currently zoned, R one D, one-family residential district. And Mr. Carlyle.
Yes, the planning commission will remember, this is the second time this item has been before the commission. The applicant is proposing a four-thousand-square-foot addition to the youth center, a new three, four-hundred-square-foot recreation building, and seven outdoor fields. At the first meeting, most of the discussion was focused on the outdoor fields and their impact upon the adjacent neighbors, and based on discussion with the neighbors as well as the planning commission, the three significant items were the type of screening, whether it be landscaping or wall, the location of the wall, as well as tree preservation. Since that meeting, we've been in correspondence with the applicant, as well as a few of the neighbors that would be impacted, and it is understanding that there's been some sort of agreement made between both parties. What the applicant has come up with is a mixed screening plan. What they're going to show is that they're going to have a... Can you go back to cycling, or the aerial, please?
Do you want the aerial?
Yeah. The applicant is proposing a six-foot-high wall that will run from this corner to this corner, and then extend to this property line at this location. From this location to this location, they are proposing to do a mix of landscape screening, and evergreen screening, and then from this location to forty feet within the... Forty feet in front of the Dequinder setback line, they're going to continue the wall. So, there's going to be a wall, a break for landscaping, based on the input of these two adjacent neighbors, and then the continuation of the wall to Dequinder. In addition to that, they are also going to preserve a twenty-foot, approximately twenty-foot wide tree buffer between the proposed wall and the sports fields. They feel there's enough room for them to preserve enough necessary trees, as well as provide safety for the players if they do extend past the sports field into that area. They have enough time to dodge trees, I guess. So, based upon what we find is a reasonable compromise and solution, we do support the proposed screening plan, based on the input of the neighbors, as well as the planning commission. The only condition we would put upon the application is that the use of the fields is limited to nine PM and cannot be used any later than that time. And I'm open for any questions from the board.
Mr. Tagle.
Does this agreement encompass the agreement of all the neighbors?
We've heard from two neighbors. The one neighbor, which is located right on the... Sorry, right on the corner of Dequinder, had requested that the wall extend to her property, and the applicant has agreed to do that. The only other neighbor we've heard directly is this neighbor located in this location. He has explained to us that he has somewhat been coordinating the efforts of the neighbors, and this is a solution that he supports. In terms of other correspondence, we have not had any direct... We have not heard any direct correspondence from either.
That doesn't tell me that all the neighbors are in agreement.
No, we're not.
So, this compromise, I suggest, maybe is not a compromise that's acceptable to everybody.
Okay. Well, this is the information directed to us from the people we've actually directly heard from.
Both the drawing that was in our packet and the one that we received, I believe, this afternoon, revisions, neither one of them shows the wall past Auburn out to Dequinder. So, before I can approve this, I'm going to have to see the wall on the site plan, and I have the same concern that my esteemed colleague has, and that is, I want to know if every homeowner that backs up to this property has been given the option of not having a wall and having special landscaping to assuage their concerns, because I'm of the feeling that we need a six-foot wall from forty feet from Dequinder all the way to the property line. What's good for the goose is good for the gander.
I just want to verify that the landscape plan that was in that email was the same landscape plan. There was no revision... There was no revised landscape plan for the one that's that you see on the screen.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Krent? All right, item number six, downtown development authority report.
There's no meeting this month, so there's nothing to report. Actually, that is my report. That's not what to report.
All right, item number seven, Mr. Savinat will give you another opportunity to tell us about the planning and zoning report.
You recall last study meeting, we had a potential project, potential PUD in the Northfield area, mixed-use development, and there was a press release that was put out by the owner of the property prior to the meeting, and got a lot of publicity, and I've continued to feel the steady stream of phone calls, emails, questions in person. I talked to the potential applicant today, said he was soliciting potential engineers to work on the application, submit an application, so we haven't received an application yet. I did strongly encourage him to not release another press release until after we had an application, because I said, what happens is, I can't be informative, because there's no application. I don't know what's going on, so when someone from the press calls or a resident calls, I've got nothing. So, he agreed that he wouldn't release another press release until after we had an application, so that's my report.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing?
Yes.
Mr. Savinat's report. No one's been to Maple and Laverne recently. Kmart is a pile of rubble.
It's moving. It's moving. All right, nothing else, we'll move on to item eight, which is a postponed item. It's a special use and preliminary site plan review, file number SU four oh nine, proposed faith Lutheran church, west side of Dequinder, north of Big Beaver. The address is thirty-seven, six thirty-five, Dequinder, section twenty-four, currently zoned, R one D, one-family residential district. And Mr. Carlyle.
Yes, the planning commission will remember, this is the second time this item has been before the commission. The applicant is proposing a four-thousand-square-foot addition to the youth center, a new three, four-hundred-square-foot recreation building, and seven outdoor fields. At the first meeting, most of the discussion was focused on the outdoor fields and their impact upon the adjacent neighbors, and based on discussion with the neighbors as well as the planning commission, the three significant items were the type of screening, whether it be landscaping or wall, the location of the wall, as well as tree preservation. Since that meeting, we've been in correspondence with the applicant, as well as a few of the neighbors that would be impacted, and it is understanding that there's been some sort of agreement made between both parties. What the applicant has come up with is a mixed screening plan. What they're going to show is that they're going to have a... Can you go back to cycling, or the aerial, please?
Do you want the aerial?
Yeah. The applicant is proposing a six-foot-high wall that will run from this corner to this corner, and then extend to this property line at this location. From this location to this location, they are proposing to do a mix of landscape screening, and evergreen screening, and then from this location to forty feet within the... Forty feet in front of the Dequinder setback line, they're going to continue the wall. So, there's going to be a wall, a break for landscaping, based on the input of these two adjacent neighbors, and then the continuation of the wall to Dequinder. In addition to that, they are also going to preserve a twenty-foot, approximately twenty-foot wide tree buffer between the proposed wall and the sports fields. They feel there's enough room for them to preserve enough necessary trees, as well as provide safety for the players if they do extend past the sports field into that area. They have enough time to dodge trees, I guess. So, based upon what we find is a reasonable compromise and solution, we do support the proposed screening plan, based on the input of the neighbors, as well as the planning commission. The only condition we would put upon the application is that the use of the fields is limited to nine PM and cannot be used any later than that time. And I'm open for any questions from the board.
Mr. Tagle.
Does this agreement encompass the agreement of all the neighbors?
We've heard from two neighbors. The one neighbor, which is located right on the... Sorry, right on the corner of Dequinder, had requested that the wall extend to her property, and the applicant has agreed to do that. The only other neighbor we've heard directly is this neighbor located in this location. He has explained to us that he has somewhat been coordinating the efforts of the neighbors, and this is a solution that he supports. In terms of other correspondence, we have not had any direct... We have not heard any direct correspondence from either.
That doesn't tell me that all the neighbors are in agreement.
No, we're not.
So, this compromise, I suggest, maybe is not a compromise that's acceptable to everybody.
Okay. Well, this is the information directed to us from the people we've actually directly heard from.
Both the drawing that was in our packet and the one that we received, I believe, this afternoon, revisions, neither one of them shows the wall past Auburn out to Dequinder. So, before I can approve this, I'm going to have to see the wall on the site plan, and I have the same concern that my esteemed colleague has, and that is, I want to know if every homeowner that backs up to this property has been given the option of not having a wall and having special landscaping to assuage their concerns, because I'm of the feeling that we need a six-foot wall from forty feet from Dequinder all the way to the property line. What's good for the goose is good for the gander.
I just want to verify that the landscape plan that was in that email was the same landscape plan. There was no revision... There was no revised landscape plan for the one that's that you see on the screen.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Krent?
Quick one. We got a letter from Carol. Is it Keeger?
Keiger.
Keiger? She had a concern about flooding. I see that there's a drain very close to that area that is directed. Is that... Is our engineering department satisfied with the drainage?
They've done a preliminary review of the drainage. Of course, file engineering won't have to be as part of the final cycling review, so they haven't gotten it final at this point yet, but they have reviewed it preliminary and have not raised any concerns.
Okay.
I have a question. It's on the landscape area where it looks like there's a road that kind of ends there. I was wondering if there's any plans to provide pedestrian access or something through that landscape buffer?
There's no plans. They have proposed a pretty dense tree and evergreen buffer. There's no indication that there's going to be any pedestrian connection.
Any other questions, comments? Is the petitioner here? Would you like to step up and add anything to the discussion?
Hello, I'm Mike Boe. I live at three-three-seven zero Auburn Drive. I'm one of the neighbors directly north of the office. And in the last meeting, you know, the wall would have been...
In terms of the wall where it's proposed and where it's omitted, we were looking at it from the relationship that the yards have facing our property. Essentially, the homes that have a rear yard relationship have the wall. Originally, we had the wall, obviously, going across the property. But there's a concern there regarding the neighbors. So, basically, what we ended up with was everyone that had a rear yard relationship with the property had a wall, and the two homes that had a side yard relationship, because those homes are physically closer to the property line, and were maybe more impacted by them having a wall there, and because they desired not to have the wall, the wall was omitted from those two properties, including obviously the six-foot for Auburn Drive. The one property up on Dequinder was kind of left. Originally, we had the wall. We took it out. We later found out that they wanted the wall, so we put the wall back. So, that's basically in a nutshell how we arrived at the current plan.
Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Schultz?
You said that the two homes on Auburn desired not to have the wall. Were all of the people with rear yards desires to have or not have a wall also considered on a one-on-one basis, or was it just decided to put a wall behind the rear yards?
I'm not sure. I guess, based on the last... The feedback in the last meeting, what we heard, and who I've been working with most closely, has been Mr. Bill and Mr. Boe, and the neighbors who live off of Auburn Drive. Our understanding was that the objection was to the wall at Auburn Drive, that location.
Based on the reaction from some earlier questions, I don't necessarily think that was accurate. Some people said that they were... They indicated that maybe they weren't given the same options, and I just want to make sure that everybody had the same opportunities. That's all. Thank you.
So, really, you only talked to the two neighbors that are residents on Auburn Drive? Is that correct, as far as the situation with the wall or the landscaping?
Those are the two I personally met.
Other questions? All right, have a seat. Yes, Mr. Savinat.
Are you ready for comments, or...
I was going to open this up.
You know, when I looked at this, I went over, tried to walk through that area. It was impenetrable jungle. I couldn't get in there. And I was thinking, we started this with a proposal to clear cut all of this. There's a huge opposition to that, and currently some discussions with some of the neighbors in the church, and we came up with... We came up with a proposal, which I think we've got in front of our screens, showing the removal of some dead trees, some small trees, some landscaping, the big trees, and I'm just wondering, maybe there's another solution to this, and that is, this is a deep line. It looks to me like, from the diagrams we've got, there's from the border to the north to where the edge of the football field is, about fifty or fifty-five feet. Why couldn't, when somebody was talking about a green collar around this area, leave about five or ten feet of the jungle where it is, and then go forward and make some arrangements? I wouldn't think you'd even need a wall. You couldn't get through there if you had to. That's my thoughts.
I think we had... That was part of the discussion we had when the petitioner was in front of us before, was not having a wall there, and then the comments that we heard back was the noise. Did we need a wall?
I'm not suggesting a clear cut with no wall. I'm suggesting we leave about five or ten feet of that jungle
Right.
on the edge there. It's so dense, I don't think that's going to be much of a noise problem. It's going to soften it. My thoughts.
Mr. Strath?
Based on what I've observed, and my recollection of the last meeting we had, I think they've gone... They bent over backwards. Number one, the only way you're going to actually stop noise is through mass, and the mass is that wall that they're putting up, which is quite an expensive ordeal. I like the idea that what they're doing is they're putting the wall rather than trench footings. They're putting piers, which I think is going to really preserve the integrity of the existing trees, so that they're not disturbing their roots or anything like that. But based on the landscape plan that I've seen, I think they've really, really tried very hard to bend over backwards to come up with a solution. I agree with you with respect to the underbrush. I think the comment on that was very good. I'd like to see that underbrush left as well, so it's kind of a natural setting. But they're not going to see it from the other side. The only ones that are going to see it is actually from the church side. But I think the combination of both, what they have done, I'm really thinking they've really bent over backwards. A lot worse could occur on that site conditions. It could be another type of use that could make it really pretty bad, so anyway.
Just so I understand, are you saying, the way the plan is shown now, with partially having a majority having a wall with interruption in Auburn, is you're saying you're thinking that's a good solution?
I think they've really gone over backwards. I think, yes. I like the solution. There's no way you're going to please a hundred percent of everybody. I don't care how we try to listen to all the arguments and everything else. There may be people that are five doors down that are going to talk, and they have nothing to... You know, I mean, they're not... They don't have anything to lose. So, you know, I'd be interested in hearing the ones that are directly adjacent to it, yes, but you're not going to satisfy everybody. I don't care what the solution is.
Yes, Mr. Schultz?
In my dealings, because I live off of I seventy-five, and the noise is always a problem, and without a solid... If you leave gaps in that wall with just vegetation, that noise is going to penetrate that very rapidly. To me, the only way that you're going to have a lot of sound deadening is either have a berm or have a... Have that concrete wall in there. I don't think that the vegetation might cut down some of the visible aspects of it, but it's not going to take away the noise at all.
Mike, how tall was the underbrush that you saw there?
It was just an amorphous blob. I mean, there were trees and shrubs and bushes and thorns. I wouldn't know how to describe that, but it was tall and thick.
All right.
But it does vary.
Varys.
Yes.
Any other comments? All right, I'm going to open it up. The public here, I don't believe, was ever closed, but I would like, if you have something to say, we've been over this a lot. If you have anything to say, please, I hope it's something new to add. And we have a proposal. We have a plan in front of us, so I guess I'd like to hear your comments relative to where you live on the property line, relative to the wall, and what comments you have. But we have gotten... Received documentation, I believe, from this lady, and so we have everything that's been submitted. So, anyone who'd like to speak, come up to the microphone, your name, address.
My name is Bill Flint, and I live at two-two-two Michelle Drive in Troy. I've been a member of faith for almost twenty years. I've served there. I still serve there. This comment about the brush, I've seen the brush. I've been through the woods. It would be a mess to leave any of that brush there. Clean up maintenance of trying to get that clean, and at any time of the year would be astronomical. I believe the walls should be put where they are supposed to be put, but, again, that's up to the planning commission and the designers. But I do believe leaving brush like that is... Because I have it in back of my house right now, and they did a new... Subdivided it back in my house, and they've left us brush, but unless they clean it up, it's going to be a mess, and the people have been putting stuff back there for years, and I'm sure that the same thing, problems existed there, that their leaves have been dumped back there and stuff like that. So, it's a bit of a mess, and it would be a mess if it's not cleared up, the shrubbery and stuff. And I'm sure they put quite a bit of thought in considering it to the people's feelings, and also the trees and everything else that can place trees, and we'll leave... They'll probably leave some of the... A lot of the trees up, the big ones, the live ones. Like you say, there's a lot of dead wood back there. But I do believe that leaving the shrubbery is a deterrent.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Colleen Geier. I live at twenty-eight sixteen Majestic, which on the plan is lot two sixty-eight for that first. Mr. Hudson, I appreciate you bringing up the consultation with the neighbors, because that was a little bit of news to us when I read through the notes and the minutes, and my neighbors and I, along with Justice Court, have not been directly consulted. We came to the meeting last time and expressed our concerns over the wall, and obviously, many of us are here again tonight, so I do appreciate you bringing that up. We would have liked to have an opportunity to talk about our concerns with respect to the planning. I think the noise is less a concern for us because of the hours that are proposed for use. It's daytime, when kids are outside anyway, so that's not really an issue. I think the biggest thing for us is, my husband and I are... The Newbies aren't a block. We've only lived there about, mine, ten years now. Everybody else has been there twice and three times as long, and we have looked at this vast beauty of trees that are sixty-plus feet tall. We've literally watched the seasons change through them over the years, and it's delightful to watch. And the thought of losing that, and then looking out the back window and seeing a pretty drab concrete wall predominantly placed at that fence line, is just heartbreaking. And while I think it's great to, you know, support the church and do things that will support that church community, I think we had hoped, based on the last meeting, you know, one of the proposals was to move that wall back and/or provide some sort of a more natural, firm barrier type of thing. I think that's what we were hoping to see tonight, as opposed to continuing to have that concrete wall right outside our back window. It does affect a lot of homeowners, and in a time when the city of Troy is having diminishing property values, a concern of ours is this will further diminish our property values, and we don't want to do that. We came to Troy for lots of great reasons, and we don't want to have that diminished any further by the change to our property. Sorry, just need to check my notes to make sure I'm covering everything. I just really would hope that the council and the petitioner would reconsider moving that wall back or creating some sort of a natural barrier a little bit farther back so that we can preserve what we have seen and enjoyed for so, so long, and that has really played a great part into our property values. Thank you.
Thank you.
Devon Fox, Troy resident, twenty-five twelve, Auburn Drive. I'm not good at this talking, so bear with me. Been a member of faith since two thousand and one. Also used to live on Locksley Court, which is beyond the church. Locksley Court is voted by Winter, and what's the other street? Wolverine. My wife and I built our home there in nineteen ninety-seven. We just moved a year ago. We were a bit surprised and disappointed when we built the home, that the landlocked wooded area behind our homes, which we're very pleased to have that view, also became our responsibility. We had to work to deal with the city and the builder, had them remanding throughout the time, that we would take responsibility And in the last meeting, you know, the wall would have been, depending on where they put it exactly, it'd be about seven to thirteen feet from the foundation of my home. And I thought, hey, that'd be adversely impacting, you know, the value of my home, you know, I didn't like, you know, didn't like that. You know, it's nice, it's wooded now, and myself, Dave, and his father, Richard, we met with Joe, and we went over his plan and came up with a compromise. And honestly, I like it. I mean, they're preserving the trees that are on the property, and they're going to have, you know, some ball fields for the kids, I mean, it's pretty much a reasonable compromise. You know, I sort of agree with the, you know, the new plan, I think it's, I think it's decent. I mean, they purchased the property, they want to use it for a good cause or whatever. You know, there's, I guess there's some room for negotiation, but I support the plan the way it is. I definitely don't want, you know, I, and some of the other neighbors too, I don't want a concrete wall seven to thirteen feet from the side of my house to look out the windows at, you know. I mean, right now, it's nice, it's natural, it's trees or whatever, so, but this is a pretty good compromise, so I support that.
Thank you. Are they signing? I can't see. Yeah, everybody that's, has spoken or will be speaking, please sign in.
I'm Dick Belts, and this is my son, David, and we did, excuse me, have an opportunity to meet with Reverend Joe, and I think we've worked out a great deal of our concerns relative to this plan. My son and his neighbor have continually maintained an area of twenty-five to thirty feet adjacent to their houses for many, many years now. And the plan that is shown there would enhance the landscaping in that area and would provide a buffer. I am not concerned, neither is my son, about the noise issue. I think the hours of operation are going to go a long way to deal with that. He has two small children, so I think the noise level is probably already elevated in his house, and some additional noise of kids playing probably is not going to be a big distraction. The one, the one suggestion I did make to Reverend Joe was that landscaping, landscaping that you see there, be shifted about five feet or so further into the site to give them a little bit more breathing room. He agreed to that with a nod of the head there, and I'm sure that can be accomplished and still maintain the overall plan. So, for that reason, we would endorse the plan, at least as it goes relative to our property. One other thought, in my past life, I've had some experience with these things, and I think the reality is, by the time you do the drainage, put in the fields, I think the idea of really saving very many of those trees is probably not going to be successful, unfortunately, simply the nature of the way things work. You may save a few of them for a year or two or three, but I think when you get the amount of drainage work that's going to need to be done, and the grading and everything else, it's probably pretty unlikely you're going to save a large number of those. Unfortunately, I think what you'll see is trees coming down over a two- or three-year period after the installation of the fields. But again, that's, that's just been my experience. Hopefully, maybe in this day and age, things are able to be worked out better than that, but I would be surprised if that's the case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Geier, I'm Colleen's wife.
Really?
No, one more thing we forgot to add, that I think, me as Colleen's husband, would really have liked the opportunity to sit down and have, be afforded the same opportunity that people on Auburn were afforded with that possible landscaping, it's an option as opposed to that six-foot wall, so I hope you guys consider that as maybe an option.
Mr. Frank?
I'd like his address. Do you give his address?
It was the same as before, 268.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sally Wolgast, I live at 3332 Wolverine. I back up to that property, I support everything Colleen said, I just felt the need to say that, and I too would have liked the opportunity, I guess I'm kind of green on how, or not sure how all this works, I too would have liked to have maybe had a meeting or maybe we were, could have been advised somehow. I mean, we were even advised, like, I thought I'd get a postcard about this meeting, but I didn't. So, I too would like an opportunity to sit down and revisit this plan.
Thank you.
I'm Kevin Geier, 37761 Dequender. And I think, I don't have any problem with the plan as long as I get that masonry fence next to my property, because right now, they play next door, but they're at least a hundred and sixty feet away from me, and the only reason I know that is because I can see from Dequender, because I can't see them from my property because of all the trees and the overgrowth, all the underbrush. I sure can hear them, and I'm home all day, and it is really loud, and that's only one group playing, and that whistle blowing, I definitely need that masonry fence, and I'm okay with everything as long as I get that.
Thank you. Did you sign in there?
I signed in.
Mike Nair, 3346 Wolverine Drive. I'm a next-door neighbor to Sally Wolgast, and we've discussed this a little bit, but our problem is that we haven't had an opportunity, similar to the people on Majestic, to discuss this with anybody as to the location of the wall in relation to our property, and the fact that on Wolverine, nobody's been, nobody's discussed it with us. And it's, it's just that we would like to see a little more buffer on our side before the wall is installed. Could it, could be four or five feet, similar to what other people have had, and that's basically our position, but everything else is fine.
What is your lot number?
121.
Anyone else?
I'm John McNamara, I live on Majestic Court, 2240. I don't know what my lot is. My concern is, back of my lot, I have evergreen trees and, there's also a catch basin right in the back of my lot, I'm just wondering how the wall, is the wall, my trees are right on the corner, like, right on the property line, I'm wondering how, getting the walls can, my trees. And I'm also wondering, if there's this concrete wall, I currently have a chain-link fence back there, so would I be removing my chain-link fence, or is there going to be a space between the two? Just concerned on that, if there's a space between the two walls, my chain-link fence, checking the wall, it's going to just be, I don't know.
Yeah, I think a lot of it depends on where your chain-link fence is relative to the property line. And we just don't know that. But typically, and there has been some comments here about moving the wall back off the property line, that's not something that I've ever seen done. It's the walls go on the property line for a reason, or whatever fence or whatever it is.
Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Maria Robinson. I'm at 2804 Majestic Court, we're neighbors with the Geysers, and my concerns are, follow what their concerns are, I mean, one of the big things, we've been there twenty-two years now, and with all the wildlife, the animals that live back there, I mean, you know, I don't know where they're going to go, I don't see why, if they're going to put a wall or a berm, I can't go further out before our fences are in the back property line now, because if we get a lot of rain, it floods in the back of our yard, and then I'm thinking, okay, now what's going to happen? Are they going to do correct drainage or get more water in our backyard than we're getting now? My brother Dequender here lives at 3250 Wolverine, and he said when they put the wall up behind their house, none of them were notified, they just put it up, they don't maintain anything back by there in the wintertime, all the snow comes up, you have kids that are going in everybody's yard over the big snow piles, and those are basically my concerns.
What is your lot number?
269.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? All right, we're going to close the public hearing, hearing. I'd like the petitioner to come on up, again, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask you. This first question, I think, is for you, Nate. The wall or the system that you're talking about, the panels of the wall themselves are not going to go down to grade and prevent any water that's moving across that property line right now to change at all, is that correct?
That would be the idea, that leave the bottoms of the panels a certain distance above the existing grade, because the green belt, if you will, of existing trees that we're trying to preserve, to go along with that, we're not changing the grade. So, there may be areas in there that have natural grade, it's not flat, it's not sloping in one direction, it's relatively unrelating inches here and there, and we don't want to impact the drainage one way or the other, drainage is currently flowing in. Those homes have rear yard drainage systems, there's catch basins and stormwater back there, so they're not only designed to take in their water, but there's probably some outside water that gets in there. But we are going to maintain that existing drainage pattern along the property line. Certainly on the plans, we show an additional drainage system that we're installing on our site, but that's to control our drainage for the improved surfaces and prevent that water from just bypassing and going into the tree area and continuing into the neighborhood.
All right, thank you. Next question is for you, Pastor. Has, what efforts have the church, has the church made to contact these neighbors at a but your property that have been involved in these meetings?
Sure. I've spoken directly to the neighbors that have contacted us, and that I have a knowledge of who the individuals are, so that's why I've worked specifically with the Beltses and with Mr. Bobay. I received an email from Mr. Zager, I'm not sure how to pronounce his name, he was requesting, he lives on 2780 Majestic, I don't have his lot number relational to that, and in your view, had asked if there was going to be a wall or some type of boundary.
Before I saw the plan.
Right, so, and I responded to your email, and so I have, I have tried to engage people as I am able to engage them.
But you have a proact, or the church has a proactively-
I have gone knock on people's doors, no, I have not.
Invitation for a meeting. Okay. Is there any other, Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I have something for Frank.
Anything for the petitioner? Anything for the petitioner?
Yeah, I will in a minute. If they were desired to expand their parking lot, how close could they get to the property line?
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet? And the property line that's on the backside, or the south side, is almost abutting that right now?
Yeah, that was, that was constructed prior to the requirement that they're, they meet this fifty-foot setback, it's a legal law-performing situation.
So, they could be at fifty feet?
They could be, the parking lot could be fifty feet away, correct?
And they could put up, they'd have to put up a wall on our new property side, obviously.
Well, potentially, really, it would be a, it would be a expansion of, of a special use, and it would be up to the planning commission to determine if that, that what they propose is appropriate.
Yeah. The other question I did want to ask the petitioner is that your civil engineering indicated that you drew some of the stormwater that's on the, the adjacent property owners. That, in your opinion, do you think that is satisfying the condition? We heard one party just get through saying that they have a flood situation. You, I notice, I see that you're actually providing your own storm drainage as well, which is not going to be in that buffer area, so that the water is not going to be actually, well, theoretically should not be actually imposing on any of their property lines, is that correct?
That's correct. The overall imperiousness of this development area, if you will, isn't much more increased than what it already is. It's green, it's going to remain mostly green except for a little bit of rough area for the recreation building, but we're taking tree canopy and turning it into grass. So there is, in reality, going to be a little more runoff than normal generated, in addition to all tree canopy. So, we are, and because these fields seem to be graded, it's difficult to flat, because we maintain some, and we give it to a couple of others, it's just, right now, just, both of them want to go and get rid of these rear yard drains that are on adjacent properties, that's where it currently goes. I do know that the rear yard drainage system that was installed with that subdivision was not designed to account for our drainage. Sometimes you find, you find these vacant, bridge parcels adjacent to a subdivision being taken to account our drainage, in this case, they did not. So then, why we're installing a separate drainage system to account, again, for our-
Well, as a follow-up, I noticed, and I was looking at the topo, it's relatively flat. I mean, there's not an whole heck of a lot you can really do with that.
Right, and that correlates to one of my previous comments about, there are them doing, it's probably, you know, inches here or there will create little pockets of water in it. What, you know, I don't recall uphand when that subdivision was constructed, but fortunately in that time, there's subdivisions we come across that didn't have rear yard drainage requirements, but the city of Troy's requirements for rear yard drainage goes back much further than other communities, so they do have rear yard drains or easements for that. Now, what has happened since the homes have developed to today, has there been anything put in the rear yards, sandboxed place that's landscaping, maybe nothing, but-
So your storm drainage that you're proposing is actually a good fifty feet away, is that what it is, but?
I would say between thirty and forty feet.
Forty feet?
We're trying to be as unintrusive as possible, because we're saving trees, we want a shallow system, so we don't disturb the roots, we want it to be as simple as possible.
We don't want to kill the trees, though?
We don't want to kill the trees.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Trump?
Yeah, a few concerns have been raised about trees dying, perhaps due to the installation of a fence and or removal of the other trees in the inside area. I was wondering if you could provide a little more information about the posts in this fence, and how deep they're drilled, how wide they are, and the likelihood from your experience.
The posts themselves are circular, probably twelve to sixteen inches back, or forty-two to fifty, fifty down across. Yeah, there's space, probably twelve feet in center, ten feet in- So close to ten feet in center, I don't know, I imagine it's just a machine with a rear hanger, yeah, a small one to be like, hidden between the trees, so tighter, tighter handle to track.
Okay, so the machine that goes through to do that's pretty narrow, too, it's designed for doing this sort of thing? Okay.
And then slipping the panels in, it's probably, actually, putting the posts in is probably the most intrusive, intrusive activity, aside from actually, you know, getting into the trees, it's more sliding the panels, there's trees that are close to the property line, that drainage is probably swinging out, you've got to be able to get a machine in there and slide the panels. But again, the machine that brings this panel, we have, again, we have no choice but to utilize small equipment, bring this, you can turn it around.
So the likelihood of that causing adjacent tree death is relatively small, you might lose a few of them in this development, but, but our plan for saving?
It's, it's been brought up, and I think I even mentioned it during the first meeting, when we, and I've seen it firsthand in developments, where we've tried to preserve, when we have a wooded area and we try to preserve a certain greenbelt with the trees in there, that's all well and good, but as time goes on, because these trees are open to the elements, when there's going to be some selective removal, because there are some dead trees in there, there are some trees that are in poor condition, there's no sense in saving those if they're half-dead, so just the general nature of getting machines in there, there's, ideally, you don't want to take any of them in here at all, but-
Is there a plan, then, to clean up any trees that would be lost as a result of this that were intended to be saved, because it's going to be right close to the adjacent property owners?
We went through the, every tree within that fifty-foot greenbelt, four inches or larger, alive or dead, regardless of condition, were tagged and located identified. And the trees that are selected for removal within that twenty or thirty- And the trees that are selected for removal within that twenty or thirty feet that immediately abut the residents, the trees that we're going to get for removal are dead trees or in support condition that were.
I agree. That's a well thought out plan. And I appreciate you going that. There'd have been a lot more angry people if you removed all the trees. So really appreciate you trying to do what you can to maintain as many as possible.
There are always some trees that are bare condition that maybe are on their way to die. But we're not tree experts and know how long they want to last.
Any other questions to the petitioner, Mr. Shepke?
The, you're trying to preserve as many trees as possible. I don't agree with leaving a brush barrier in there. I think it's going to be a real eyesore for you folks. And it's going to be an eyesore where there's any kind of a break at all in that wall back there. So, and when you're getting in doing a selective removal, you're going to, you're going to have pathways going through there with either a backhoe or some other piece of equipment trying to remove that dead wood. So to me, if, I would, I would think that all of that brush should be removed from back there. And so that it can be maintained. It's pretty hard to maintain an area when you can't get back there to work on the trees, to grow them and to take care of them and to shape them or whatever. Or, or fight disease that might crop up. So to make a nice clean, a nice clean job, I think that brush should come out of there. And you should put the appropriate trees where they're proposed on the drawings. And if they want to break in the wall, I disagree with that for, for a noise, a barrier. But I can understand the closeness of the proximity to their homes. And that's something for somebody else other than me to work it out. But I think that that's going to be a nice facility you have there. And I think that that jungle is just going to get worse back in there. And I think it needs to be cleaned out.
The one note I wanted to make about the brush is that there are additions to the preserving trees. There are new trees that are proposed in between, between the gaps. If we save the brush, you're not going to get the new trees. Because we're not going to plant trees in the middle of brush and we can't touch the brush. And that's just the way to choke the pine trees. They're probably going to be more incisive that way.
Anything else? Thank you. Let's see. Bring it back to the, to the table for discussion. Mr. Grant?
My question is, I count roughly thirteen homes that directly abut this project. Both, both of them, of course, on Majestic and a few on Wolverine. Out of those thirteen homes, we, I think my count rate is that four or five people came up. Were all, I guess this is to staff, were all people are on that, within that three hundred foot of this property line? All identified, all notified about this hearing?
No.
No.
Absolutely not.
Not this one? This particular one?
Yeah.
No, they're not, no, they were not required to.
Not required to. Were they originally notified for the other meeting?
Yes. And that that last meeting, this meeting was continued to a date certain, so it didn't require re-notification?
Okay. Well, I guess my comment is I would like to hear, I would have loved to hear from more of those people regarding the wall or not the wall. I just, I'm not clear. I mean, one person, one person definitely said they didn't want the wall. That was at twenty-eight forty. I'm sorry, twenty-eight, twenty-eight sixteen. Twenty-eight forty was here and there to me. Twenty-eight oh four was, I didn't get a clear direction. I want the wall, I don't want the wall. You know, that's, that's the kind of thing I was looking for. I felt that there was a majority of people that just felt that they didn't need the wall, didn't mind the noise. We could go to a different plan, but as, as the input from the residents and from the petitioner, I think the plan's fine the way it is.
Mr. Schultz?
I'm going to say a couple of things. This is just another, yet another example of a frequent and recurring problem here in the city where residents for years have enjoyed a view shed that unfortunately they don't control. And the people that control the property, defined as the people that own it and pay taxes on it, are the people that control the trees. And the only way you can control the trees is to own the property. Get into this every time somebody wants to develop something in the city. I stated earlier, in an earlier meeting, that I will not support a plan that basically gives the property owners five, ten, or even two feet of additional land from what the church has bought. The property line is the property line and it will remain the property line as far as I'm concerned. And I also feel that the six foot fence should run from the west, on the north property line should run from the west property boundary to the forty foot setback from Dequinder regardless of how close or far a house is from the wall. A property line is a property line.
I have a couple of thoughts. There are, there are several ways that a wall is not the only way that the buffer can be, barrier can be achieved. It could be a totally landscape barrier. And Tom, I'm much like, like you, I, I don't think ours here, our job here tonight is to decide who gets landscaping, who gets the wall. I find a little bit of fault with the petitioner that they didn't make the effort to make contact with the neighbors and, and work this out prior. I made, I don't know how many of you guys are going to agree with this, but I, I'm willing to postpone this again. Let the petitioner do his due diligence with the neighbors and come back with a plan as best they can. And at that point, as long as the neighbors have been in contact, and I think it's a, it's a good neighbor gesture on their part to see if a compromise can be worked out. And if not, then so be it. But I think the concern I have is that there was not that communication. And we always try to encourage that communication in situations like this. Mr. Hudson?
I concur with you. I'm ready to vote no on this plan, only for a couple of reasons. One, not all the neighbors had input. Some made an effort to do it, others didn't. I don't think the burden was up on them to do it. I think the church should have done that. Secondly, you're absolutely right. We don't have to put a concrete barrier up there. We don't have to put a stone barrier up there. A landscaping barrier has been allowed many times by the border zoning appeals. I think that's appropriate. Maybe I'm pushing a little bit, but I will think that if you left five or ten feet of the woods out there, you'd, we need a landscaping barrier. It's there. Nevertheless, I would support you if you wanted to adjourn this to a later date to give all the neighbors an opportunity to have input.
Mr. Schultz?
I can support the postponement. I just want to be sure that whatever is ultimately agreed to, all, and I believe it's thirteen or fourteen houses, fifteen houses with the ones on Wolverine, that they all get the same consideration and the same deal. Not just two of the property owners out of the fifteen get a special deal. Everybody gets the same thing.
Mr. Grant?
Yeah, I just, I just want to basically reiterate what Mr. Schultz just said. I, I would like to see the postpone. And I'd like to, I would like to see the effort from the church to meet with each of their neighbors.
Mr. Stratt?
My concern is we could have a hodgepodge of different solutions all the way across the board there. Some will be walled, some will not be walled. And to me, that, that doesn't just, like, I think what Mr. Schultz says, I think it should be something that everybody gets the same treatment regardless of what it is. You know, the majority should rule on this, not, not all of a sudden, I'd like to have flowers. I want to go back. I want to, you can't do that. You don't own the property. You can't just have that enjoyment.
But the point is, they all, they haven't had this meeting yet. That's the point. Nobody has sat down around the table and, and had, see if there's consensus that could be reached. We don't know that yet.
I think they made an effort to do that, but that's, that's my opinion. That's my opinion. They, everybody has their own opinion.
No, it's not an opinion. The pastor said that he talked to the people, the three people that contacted him. They made no effort to contact the others.
If you had a problem, would you not make contact with the pastor? If you were a resident along the, you would not have done that?
In my opinion, Tom, it's church's responsibility.
You're entitled to yours, not entitled to mine.
This is not a majority rules thing because I'll guarantee you, the majority of people in this room would say, we don't want anything built there.
Right.
We want it to remain a wooded field. Don't put up any practice fields. So I agree that they should meet with the other property owners and discuss any options. But it's going to be an all or nothing. It's going to be the same along the entire east and west property line, or I'm going to vote it down. Just so everybody knows.
Mr. Kenton?
I kind of agree with, I, I really personally, I think that the wall should be the full distance. Adding that hole is going to detriment some of the people that have walls. They'll get the noise going through, but won't have the visibility to make landscape and stuff. So I'd support the full wall. I do agree that it'd be nice to have everybody together in a meeting. I want to ask a question of Brent. You said that everybody was notified in the area via postcard. Do you know what the content were when it, when it went out? Could you?
Well, Kathy could probably tell you verbatim what it says, but basically what it, what it does is it informs everyone with every property owner or resident within three hundred feet that there's a, that there's a public hearing. It was, it was for the first, our first public hearing. The date, the time, the issue, the application, where, contact information, if they have any questions, a website where they can go look at the information, et cetera. We held the public hearing and it was postponed to a date certain, which is this evening. So everyone who was at that meeting was, was fully informed of the fact that there was a meeting this evening. So that's the carryover.
Didn't receive that.
I don't think we knew it was tonight. We investigated that. Maybe we could have looked online and saw that, but we weren't told it was tonight.
Again, I'm not going to debate this with anybody, but it was mentioned at that meeting that the meeting was this evening.
Okay. I just wanted to make certain that everybody was aware. What's that? I mean, is it a small postcard?
It's a yellow, it's a, it's a, it's a yellow postcard.
Okay. I haven't seen one personally, so I should go first.
The other thing to keep in mind is when this application came before us initially, the petitioners stated emphatically that a barrier wall was a requirement for them. And they were discussing clear cutting the property. I applaud them for leaving the trees. I think it's a wonderful thing. But it was a requirement for them that there be a physical barrier between the residential properties and this ball, or this recreation area, in large part to control the young people that are going to be using the fields to keep them from wandering where they shouldn't go. So everybody needs to keep in mind that that was a requirement on the part of the petitioner when this initially came to us.
Well, the hope is if everybody gets in the room, their opinions, and the petitioner can come back with their final proposal, then we'll, Mr. Stratt?
I just hope that we're not putting a gun to the petitioner's head.
In what way?
In that we're going to satisfy and appease everyone's, the neighbors, and they have to appease whatever. I think they've bent over backwards right now. But that's my opinion. And you're entitled to yours and as I am mine. But I, I really don't like the idea of being, put a gun to somebody's head that, that wants to do all of this.
I agree. And that's not what we're doing here.
Well, I hope not. I hope that they don't think that, that they're going to get whatever they want. That that's not what I'm really after. I don't mind a compromise. I think that they've really bent over backwards. They're planting additional trees. They put up a wall. That wall is not an inexpensive wall that they're trying to put up. It's not cheap, let alone trying to put in all landscape and they have done. I, I, I think they've really bent over backwards trying to please if not the majority. But that's my opinion.
Mr. Schultz?
Having a senior moment, something just went out of my head. I, I like the idea of them having discussions. I think it's important for everyone in the room, petitioner and resident, to understand that it's the nine people that sit at this table that will ultimately decide what happens on the property line. It's not going to be, I want a wall, I don't want a wall, I want pink petunias, I want geraniums. It's, it's going to be something consistent. And with that, I would ask how long the petitioner, or how long we would recommend postponing this? Four weeks, six weeks?
Well, we asked the petitioner, how long we think it will take.
Because you need time to get any documentation changes back out to us and expected. So how about the regular meeting in November? That would be six weeks from tonight?
Sheriff?
Just a second.
You want to respond to that?
That's, that's, that's taken a conservative approach. We could probably do it, I guess I'd lean towards to the petitioner.
Okay.
I guess a couple.
Could you please come up to the chair?
Before I answer the question, I want to ask a question. It's fairly clear on where this is heading, but I just want to throw out this option. It seems that at the first meeting, the primary concern was the physical vegetation. We're terrified of damaging trees. And it seems the way that the meeting is going tonight, that that visual impact is a primary concern. I want to see the vegetation. They talk about the, the brush, et cetera. And that the wall serving as a sound barrier really doesn't matter. It's more of an aesthetic. It's more of a visual obstruction to the residents of the vegetation. So at this point, what if we forget the wall? What if a chain link fence, leave the vegetation there? We'll leave the existing trees, five foot, even ten feet is probably too narrow, honestly. A whole lot. So if we're already trying to preserve trees in, say, twenty feet, why don't we preserve everything in twenty feet? We just go in there with a chain link fence as a physical barrier in case kids do sneak through the brush. And I mean, there's some yards that already have some chain link fencing, so that would stay. We just fill in the gaps and etc. And we leave twenty feet untouched as vegetation. In the areas where, because as you get closer to the properties, and I'm not trying to say, again, treat anybody differently than, but when you look at the, you look closely at one of the climbing sort of tree line, it does open up a little bit because they've been maintaining twenty to thirty feet onto our property off of those two properties. So we might have to supplement additional mining where there's really not much to preserve in that twenty feet under brush. But that would be okay with us to just leave that twenty feet untouched.
Well, again, what's that?
My suggestion would be come back with your proposal.
Yeah, I was going to say, we, even if we all agreed, we couldn't act on that tonight. So I think the critical issue here is you've got to talk to your neighbors. Because, you know, I mean, all we're trying to do is give everyone an avenue to come around the table and discuss something. If there's no consensus, if it can't be reached, you come back with your, your plan. And there, we have options, whether it's a concrete wall, whether it's a fence, whether it's landscaping. You come back with, with what you feel is the best you can do based on your conversation with the, with the neighbors. And you go from there.
Consensus with the neighbors?
Based on that, anticipating that we may have revised plans to submit, we could probably make this happen quickly as far as speaking with the neighbors and vice versa. And I guess the question is, how much time do you need for us to submit a plan? And do you, you're on to it to make sure that everybody gets the pack, it was on time. We could, we could have this done as soon as two weeks. But I don't know if that.
Mr. Hudson?
I like what I'm hearing, but I hope they're not omitting meeting with the neighbors before you submit this plan.
No, no. We would expect trying to do that and the plan revise. It doesn't take much to revise the plan at this point.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I think for study session in October, the fourth, the fourth Tuesday in October, gives us one.
Chairman, I will postpone this item until the study, special study session on the fourth Tuesday of October.
Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Chagle?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kenton?
Yes.
One second. Okay. If everyone just hold on one second, please. So just to be clear for everyone. So, just to be clear for everyone here, because we're not sending postcards, I want to be clear. We will be meeting on this item, this room, 7:00 PM, October 22nd, fourth Tuesday of October. Okay? Be here, be square. See you later. Be here, be square, be here, be square.
That's in the minutes.
It's in the minutes of the last meeting, too.
All right. Next item. Item number nine, land unit development review, public hearing, land unit development, Kilmer Place.
At the northeast corner of Big Beaver and Kilmer, 3088 Kilmer, section 22, currently zoned PUD, land unit development, number 10, district. Mr. Stratt.
Carlisle. Yes. The Kilmer, Big Beaver PUD was approved in concept and preliminary plan in 2009. Since that time, the retail portion of the front on Big Beaver has been built. The property then has been acquired by a residential home builder, who has come in to ask for an amendment to the approved retail, I'm sorry, the residential portion in the rear. The applicant seeks two additional units, and a slight redesign of their site plan. I will note that there are two additional units, but the actual square footage of the building envelope itself is actually smaller than what was approved in the original approval. The planning commission reviewed this item at the June 25th meeting, and at that, at that meeting, the issues that were discussed were the number of units, the outdoor elements of the site, including the courtyard, the fountain, public area, as well as tree preservation, and lastly was the issue of site parking, including the amount of guest parking provided. Since that last meeting, the applicant has submitted a slightly revised site plan, in that they have reduced the number of, increased the units from three to two. So, now that they're asking for a total of 16 units, from what was approved at 14 units. In addition, the applicant has presented a revised central courtyard. That includes the preservation of an existing heritage hickory tree, I'm sorry, it's a walnut tree, I believe, increased landscaping, as well as a internal courtyard sitting area. Based on discussion of the planning commission, the applicant has revised their elevations slightly, to make them a little more consistent with the residential in the rear of the site, rather than the retail in the front. We find that this really is a good compromise and transition between the two various uses on both sides of the site. In regards to parking, the applicant has added two additional guest parking spaces to the site, and so in total, there are six parking spaces, these are guest parking spaces. There are six parking spaces on Kilmer Drive, these are on street spaces, five internal guest parking spaces by the rain garden, as well as 12 shared parking spaces with the retail PUD in front. So, overall, we do find the applicant has met the direction based on the planning commission's last review. We do find the addition of the two units, improvements to outdoor elements, and increase in guest parking is consistent with what was approved in the previous PUD, and it does meet all PUD standards. So, for that, we are recommending approval of the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Mr. Schultz.
Ben, you mentioned the difference in square footage, which I didn't write down, unfortunately, but they're planning more units, but less square footage, is that what?
Yes, and I had it in my original report, the actual number, and I don't see it in my revised report.
Do we have a property area coverage amount?
I think the applicant can better address the specifics about that.
Because I'm, I'm thinking the units may be smaller, but we're going to get a lot more of the ground covered up.
Any other questions for Mr. Carlisle?
The answer is going to be some footprint. Petitioner like to step forward, sign in?
I did sign in. Jim Clark, 6905 Telegraph Road, Blue Hill Hills, Michigan, representing Robertson Brothers. With me here tonight is Terry Gettrich, the retail developer and owner, and our partner on this, this venture. To address the one specific question, the gross square footage approved on the initial plan was 13,727 gross square feet on the first level. The proposal for our 14 units is 9,600 square feet on the first level, a 4127 square foot difference, or a 30% reduction in first floor coverage. So, the overall site being about an acre will cover 9,600 square feet of that. They're three-story units. The first floor is principally a park, two-car parking, and a laundry room, a guest room, and conveyance up to the second floor. So, I don't have a whole lot to add, other than we went, we took Mr. Stratt's comments to heart, went after a, hopefully a more creative courtyard design. We did add brick, as a result of Mr. Schultz's comment. We were able to get additional parking spaces. It's our opinion with the surrounding retail, if there is a party situation in this project, there is a lot of on-street parking, there's a lot of retail parking and office parking, which a guest could avail themselves up. Because we're partners with the retail component, there won't be any issue with striking a deal if that's the planning commission's desire. I mean, I think their shared parking was contemplated. Our people are at work while their retail is principally going. We did, as I said, revise several of the elements, and, you know, the other, the other thing is it did provide for increased setbacks and less impervious surface, more landscape area between the residential and the retail. And it's not that we didn't listen to the changes. We feel that we want to relate more to the residential than to the commercial, and I think that argument can go back and forth both ways. It was so much more urban design, as originally envisioned. We think this is very appropriate, and has been successful for Robertson Brothers and other communities and other sites. Any questions? Or Carrie, if you have other.
I'm available.
Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Grant.
A couple of quick comments. One, I applaud you. I think you did a marvelous job of taking your comments, putting it into, onto paper.
Thank you.
I especially like the rain gardens. It looks like there's two. There's one in the upper north corner. Is there, it shows rain garden in the middle court, is that?
There'll be a, a, a small rain garden as part of that center courtyard, in addition to the one that was originally planned, which is sort of the semicircle in the northeast corners.
And I especially like the use of the turf pavers, instead of just putting solid asphalt down. I think it's, it's great. I haven't seen that used much in the, you know, they came out in the late 1960s, 1970s with turf paper, pavers. I haven't seen a lot of it used, but I'm glad to see it here.
Thank you. Mr. Stratt.
Just speaking of rain gardens, what is a rain garden?
You know, as near as I can tell, a rain garden is BMPs, or best management practices, which is simply an area to gather rainwater coming off impervious surfaces, put in landscape materials that will soak up some of, some of the water that's there, keeping it from just hitting the drainage system immediately. So, we have not done a lot. They're more recent development, but, you know, we've been doing open ditches and swales in a project in a neighboring community. The whole stormwater management system was BMPs, and it was a demonstration product, project, which was literally just going back to the way it was originally envisioned, which is rainwater hits the ground and runs off to drainage ditches. So, we created swales and plant materials to hopefully do it. So, that's our goal here.
The rain garden is already installed as part of the phase one of the retail. It's already in, in the site.
What is a rain garden?
That's why, I think in addition, there's a filtration.
I see the same question, but that's okay. There is a definition of that, that different than a bio-swell.
Got to hit any of them?
It's the vegetation, it's part of the vegetation that's actually.
The rain garden was part of the approved first phase of the PUD.
This is not the first phase of PUD.
No.
What was approved was that, not this.
The rain garden's location and its current dimensions was what was approved, and has not changed from the first, what was approved, preliminary, well, the final approval, and what is being shown for the amendment tonight. It's already actually installed.
You're talking about four years ago, three years ago, or anything?
As part of the, can I? As part of the, as part of the PUD agreement, it was recorded that the applicant, when they built phase one on the, on the frontage, as they treat the, the relationship with the residential to the north, they installed the fence-wall combination and the landscaping and the rain garden as part of that. So, that's there now. That, that, that area along the property line to the north.
Yes, Mr. Schultz.
As my memory serves, Brent, that was in part to avoid the situation we had at Dequinder and Big Beaver, or John R. and Big Beaver, where it was clear cut, and it's still clear cut eight years later.
Yeah, we recognize that, that given the marketplace, it would, it would potentially take some time in order to market and develop the residential portion, and the applicant at the time was gracious enough to, to agree with us that it would take some time. And here we are, lo and behold, years later, moving forward to hopefully construct this.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Have a seat, please. All right, this is a public hearing. And we'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone here that would like to talk on this item, please step forward.
Hello, my name is Anil Narisetti. I live in 452 Langston, right beside the public liners. I'm not very good in talking on the microphone, but I think the biggest concern I have, I think I moved like two years back to the house, and the last two years, when I moved in, the property already started building, I never had any privacy after the trees were gone. I think from that time, I've been told like there'll be like high-end condos going to come, and the property is going to still be, value will be maintained as it is. Now, they're adding extra units. I'm hoping the property value will go down. That's the extra concern I have. I'm already having like not any privacy at all. There's a lot of noise behind my house, and the trees that they were putting, and there was like no dense at all. Still, I don't have any privacy that's at fault, but now these condos, I'm really concerned about how it's going to affect my future life, too. So, I just want to add to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the table for discussion or a motion.
Whereas on June 15th, 2009, city council approved the preliminary development plan for the BDK mixed-use development, land unit development, PUD 10, located on the northeast corner of Big Beaver and Kilmer, located in section 22, and whereas the approximately 2.5 acre BDK mixed-use PUD included approximately 19,000 square feet of retail and 14 attached residential units, and whereas construction of the retail component of the PUD along Big Beaver frontage was recently completed, and whereas Robertson Brothers Company intends to add two additional residential units within the residential component of the PUD known as Kilmer Place, and where, who wrote this? And whereas the proposed increase of two residential units improves the outdoor elements and increases the guest parking, and, and increase in guest parking is in compliance with what was originally approved, and whereas the proposed revision of the PUD meets the standards for approval set forth in section 11 dot 03. Be it therefore resolved, the planning commission recommends the city council to the concept development plan approval, and the preliminary development plan approval for the revised residential component of the BDK mixed-use development, planned unit development be granted. Boy, that's a mouthful.
Second. I thought it was very well to put the end.
You didn't have to read it.
Mr. Schefke.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
No.
Mr. Chagle.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Scherr.
Yes.
I would like it to be noted that the reason why I voted no was the fact that I'd like to be incorporated in the merits, that I voted no because of the fact that the original PUD, there were high-end condos, and I feel that these are not high-end condos, as I originally voted for.
Thank you. All set?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, item number 10, preliminary site plan review, file number SB 985, proposed Oakland-Troy senior project, southeast corner of Square Lake and Adams, section 20, currently zoned RE, one-family residential district. Mr. Carlisle, are we going to close this?
Yes, and I'll move through this somewhat quickly. The applicant is requesting approval of a 92-bed assisted senior living facility located in southeast corner of Square Lake and Adams Road. Senior living is a permitted use in the R1A district, and so this is simply a site plan review process for the planning commission. As part of the development, the applicant proposes two curb cuts on the site, one off Square Lake and one off Adams Road. In regards to the site plan, we did do a full site plan review, and we addressed a number of concerns and issues that we had raised, most specifically, and I'll summarize it by stating that we felt that the site was inefficient in terms of its use of the area, and included an unnecessary impervious surface that could be much better site designed. With that, we gave them really three recommendations to consider for the applicant. One is to consolidate parking, two is moving the building closer to Adams and Square Lake, and three is removing the full service drive around the building. Since the last, our review that went out on Friday, the applicant did submit a revised site plan to our office today. I did get a chance to review, Brent and I got a chance to review the site plan and speak with the applicant this afternoon. I believe they have a revised site plan to show the planning commission tonight. It appears at first blush that it does address many of the issues that we did raise. However, we have not done a full site plan review, so I can't speak to whether it meets all the ordinance requirements or not. We just simply reviewed it today. The applicant is looking for some approval tonight. However, we can't recommend approval at this time, because we haven't done a full site plan review, but I think the applicant is looking for some sort of direction, direction from the planning commission, if they're headed the right direction in terms of the site plan that's submitted. In regards to other acts, other issues that were raised, in terms of access and circulation, the development was reviewed by the traffic consultant. They had a list of minor amendments to the plan, and those can be addressed pretty easily by the applicant. The only major issue that the, that the traffic engineer did speak to was in regards to extending the left-hand turn lane farther along Square Lake, so it extends into or past the access drive for this development. The applicant has agreed to this condition and will comply with that. The other significant change from the original site plan that we reviewed and what was shown tonight is that the number of parking spaces, based on the number of beds, 92 beds, and the employees, 88 parking spaces are required by ordinance. The plan that, that the planning commission has seen shows, I believe, 66 spaces, or 64 spaces? 58 spaces?
64.
64 spaces.
Did you say that right the first time?
Yes, 60, 64 spaces. The revised site plan they're showing tonight, they will show tonight, shows 76 spaces, which is a deviation of 12 spaces. They've submitted evidence that based on their existing facilities, they feel that 50, I think 54 is the number that they felt would be sufficient for this use. They are now providing an additional 20 parking spaces on the site plan. In regards to landscaping, a landscaping plan was submitted. A revised landscaping plan did not, was not submitted as part of the revised site plan. What I would like to see in the revised landscape plan is landscaping screening along, I have to the pointer real quickly. No, shoot, you know, the revised site plan. The revised site plan shows parking in this, along this drive aisle. I want to, I would like to see some revised landscaping of the buffering along this property line to, so it doesn't impact the adjacent single-family. I'd even go so far to recommend some sort of knee wall or hedge screen in line along the entire length to screen property, car headlights. In addition, you'll see in the revised site plan, this is, this area is eliminated in terms of drive aisle and parking. I'd like to see some increased landscaping in this corner and see what the applicant proposes for that additional area. Moving forward. So, again, as I noted, the proposed use is by right, and so the applicant has to resubmit a site plan that we do feel meets most of our concerns, and we haven't done a full site plan review, I will note. So, again, they're looking for direction from the planning commission in regards to if they're moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle.
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Carlisle?
Minor point, on the left-hand turn lane, you've already acknowledged that the, the property developer is going to comply with that. I just need a little clarification. How does that work, in other words, with a public street? I mean, do they, it looks like the road's wide enough to extend that left-hand turn lane already, but how does that really work between the government and a private developer?
The details have not been worked out in terms of how they would do it, if there's enough right-of-way within the existing pavement to do it. It would, they would, it would be paid for by the applicant.
Okay.
It would not be responsibility to the city of Troy.
Very nice, thanks.
Yes, Mr. Schefke.
Yes, I, I have a question. Uh, is this going to be a similar facility to like the Heartland facility that's up there on, uh, Liver Noise and South Boulevard? Uh, like, were you going there for physical therapy and that out of?
Yeah, but that's, um, that's one issue we did raise to the applicant. We did note that, um, any sort of additional, um, use of facility where people come in for rehabilitation on a short-term basis, et cetera, would require them to go through the site plan review process or especially use process, actually. Um, this is assisted living, which is, which is people stay there for extended period of time. Um, there's not people coming in day, daily in or out, daily hours, um, only, only staff. If they, um, provide, um, accessory or auxiliary uses to the, to the facility, they will have to come in through a special use program.
If there was any other kind of usage, uh, even with seventy-six parking places, uh, I know that Heartland facility, they're parking in the neighborhoods, they're parking everywhere they can park, and parking in, uh, I don't know, some Moose Lodge or whatever that's across the street. So the parking is a very, very key issue, and, uh, I didn't quite understand exactly what, uh, the total usage of this facility, uh, was going to be when I was going over the bridge.
Mr. Hudson?
I'd like to follow up on that if I may. You said an assisted living facility. Is it planned in having a memory quote-unquote unit in it, or is it purely just going to be assisted living?
I believe it's going to be, it's going to have both components. The applicant, can I explain more detail about what they're doing?
Mr. Strad?
Yeah, uh, is there not, on a northwest, or a southwest corner, on this property, on this property, right on the corner there, isn't there a utility line there? Or isn't there something, a pumping station or something?
Yes.
Yeah.
I can talk about that.
Okay.
Right there, there's a, there's construction going underway now. There's actually a utility easement here that, um, partly in the right-of-way, partly on this property that allows for this work. It's a, it's a Sunoco pipeline project that, um, we, um, it's not required, that type of utility project does not require site plan approval from planning commission, but it does require, it does require to meet our ordinance. Um, and, uh, we have yet to receive a site plan showing how they propose to screen what's being constructed. I haven't seen anything yet. Um, there's a similar type facility in, in Bloomfield Township that's, I've seen a site plan for, it's nicely fenced and screened, it's, you would never know it from the road. This is not that. Um, it's pretty unsightly, and there's work to be done here. So it's, it is separate from this parcel. Again, there is an easement, and the, the, the applicant that's here this evening has nothing to do with this. It's a, it's completely unrelated, except for the fact that it's, it's on their property via an easement. So, um, what, what, if it would please the planning commission, when I get a site plan, I know what it's going to look like, I can certainly share it with the planning commission, so, so you know what, what's going to be, what's going to take place here over the corner.
So it's not within the, the sight line? It's not within the sight boundaries of?
It actually, a portion of it is. A portion of it, the easement comes over like this.
Well, it is an easement.
Part of it's on the right-of-way and part of it's on the, on this property. Yeah.
As a supplement, there is a second easement at Arland and Square Lake for Sunoco, and they've got, uh, a similar structure underway at that point also. Not on this property though, but just adjacent to it. And there's going to be, well, there is, a one-and-a-half-foot pipeline running through the parking lot, which is projected.
Running from the, from the northwest corner to the south, the northeast corner?
At least the plans I've shown, it shows a one-and-a-half-foot gas pipeline underneath the projected parking lot of, uh, this project.
Yes, Mr. Schultz?
Just, just a comment. Having unfortunately had experience with care facilities, I agree with Mr. Shepkey. Heartland has been a problem ever since it was built. There's totally insufficient parking. Originally, we approved the new parking lot and somehow a building ended up there instead. Um, I have personal experience with both Cherrywood and Sterling Heights and Evergreen and Southfield. They both have grossly insufficient parking. Um, when the petitioner gets up, I'm going to be asking for their definition of assisted living because most nursing facilities have assisted living, skilled care living, and memory units. And frequently, the assisted living guests have vehicles still because they still have mobility. So that has to be figured in if that is in fact going to be the residential makeup of this facility.
Thank you. Yes?
Uh, something else to consider, I think, in terms of the parking is that, um, assisted living homes often have a lot of volunteers that come in, so, uh, they require parking too. Um, I know there's a, there's a, there's a assisted living place across from my school, and a lot of kids volunteer there, and, uh, I often have trouble parking, so that's just something else to consider.
Thanks, Brent. Thank you. All right, is the petitioner here?
Good evening, commissioners. Lorenzo Cavalier. I'm here to represent, uh, the property owner and the development. Uh, we have gone back and forth with Mr. Sodant and, uh, Mr. Carlisle on the actual layout of the site. Um, I think that we addressed all the comments and concerns, uh, with this plan, uh, that we're showing here. Uh, can you answer any direct questions that anybody has?
Mr. Cavalier, who or what is Windermere of Troy Land Holdings LLC?
Uh, that is an entity, uh, that was created, uh, for the development of this project.
I checked with the state of Michigan this afternoon, and they have no registration or knowledge of this LLC.
Edward Mancini, I am the current property owner, and we joined together to do this post together. Uh, I had a meeting with my attorneys last week, and they said it was filed. Uh, the company has not been, the?
It has not been filed nor received by the state, and you've got a phantom applicant here tonight.
Um, I have filings, but I'll confirm why or why not stand on the state's website because I do have the papers in my office.
Unfortunately, I think we're going to review this and come back again, so if you're creative in the meantime, that'll probably solve the problem.
I'll make sure they're creative and I'll bring the topic, be sure.
Your representation has been done, is good enough.
Um, if, you know, if you want to talk a little about the easements, I know a little bit more about the easements, uh, the Sunoco pipeline, because I dealt with them directly. And that's over this green belt area here, which is not in, uh, the way of the construction of our site. So if that's, if you're worried about, that's off in this corner here.
What's in the, Strad?
What's in the corner there at, uh?
The corner, I believe is, and you can see it actually from the aerial, is this little white pump station. Uh, I think it's a sewer pump station. And that is, again, it's way out of our development. Uh, in fact, I know because, um, Ron Akavati, the, uh, who was doing work in this area, was using this stoned area for a parking lot, and they thought it was all, that was all easement. It's not. The real, the only easement comes across to the top, and it's not in influence of our construction project.
Yeah, seems to be a lot of activity there, that's all.
Yeah, I, I don't know what, uh, Ronnie Akavati was doing there. All I know is he was using that gravel area. And I know the gentleman said, "Go ahead and use it," even though it's not an easement area.
Mr. Schultz?
Could you define exactly what services this facility is going to provide? Is it going to provide assisted living, skilled care nursing, and memory care?
Um, it will not provide skilled nursing. Uh, the second floor would be dedicated to forty-six memory care beds, and the first floor will be forty-six, uh, beds of assisted living.
And how many of those beds do you anticipate will have motor vehicles?
If there are four, I'd be surprised. Assisted living?
How many beds?
I'm sorry?
How many beds, assisted living?
Uh, ninety, assisted living forty-six.
I think you're going to have more than four, but that's a personal opinion.
Pardon me, we op- we operate a facility that has seventy-four beds, and I believe there's two vehicles.
My concern is you don't have anywhere near enough parking for a facility this size. Nowhere near enough parking. I mean, people are going to be coming to visit every single day, and there will not be enough room for them to park.
Um, actually, we've, we've done some analysis on the facility that we currently own, uh, which is a hundred and twenty-seven independent living, uh, units, and seventy-four assisted living, uh, beds. And, um, when you do the math and factor the beds, because here we have ninety-two, over there we have seventy-four, um, and we come up with the, with the requirement, including visitors, uh, the fifty-six parking spaces. We're providing seventy-six. Um, the ordinance requires eighty-eight. We can get to eighty-eight. Our plan right now is showing seventy-six, but we can meet the ordinance of eighty-eight.
How many employees?
The, um, the largest shift.
Not doing it, you're going to do it here.
The largest shift, which is the day shift, we have thirteen employees.
Thirteen?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Shepkey brought up, um, Heartland, which is a comparable, which is comparable insofar as it's got assisted living. Um, and you're absolutely right, Mr. Shepkey, there was a really hellacious parking problem there for, for some time. Um, when that was proposed years ago, and it was initially developed, first of all was a consent, consent judgment, um, application, but we were kind of, the staff and planning commission was somewhat kept in the dark about the fact that they were going to do rehabilitation in the, in the facility. That was, we didn't know that. So when that was introduced, it was, they, they, they kind of did both. They did, they did the assisted living and the rehabilitation. The rehabilitation really demands a lot of parking because not only have you got a steady stream of P, of, uh, of people going there, you've got people that are going there daily to rehab, you've got people that are staying overnight, or, um, and you've got, you know, people driving there to visit, and it, just that the parking demand of that was really, really high. This is not going to have that component, right? You, you stated?
It, it will not. Um, to have that component, you need a certificate of need from the state, which we do not have. We're not seeking one. Um, and another point to make in the skilled nursing setting, um, your staff-to-resident ratio is, uh, rule of thumb, one to one-point-five per resident. Um, here, in a, in a memory care scenario or an assisted living, uh, scenario, that staff-to-resident ratio is closer to like eight to nine residents per staff member. And those are, uh, that's, those are based off regs, off the state regs. Um, we will not have any outpatient services, uh, here, um, which I am familiar with. Somebody mentioned about Cherrywood, uh, where they do have skilled nursing, they're adding assisted living.
Add assisted living?
I'm, I'm sorry, they just made?
Other living?
Yes, no, they, 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 they're just expanding, um, a rehab center. That's what they're adding now is rehab center, um, on, on the north end of the site. Um, but those activities, other, the assisted living, yes, we are in common with that, but not the skilled nursing or the, um, the physical therapy or outpatient services that are generally more common in a, in a skilled nursing setting.
And just to add one more thing, the, um, the rehab, the outpatient, is not permitted in this district. It's, it's not a permitted use, so if, if they were to do that here, they would be in violation of our ordinance, and we would take enforcement action on them. They've told us they're not going to do it. We believe they're not going to do it. So the parking, I think, is going to work a lot better.
Mr. Shepkey?
Um, even if they're not going to, not going to do that, um, even with, uh, the assisted living or the, you know, you're going to have relatives come in, in the middle of that facility. I noticed there was a nurses station in the middle with, um, living rooms at, on each side. And those living rooms are kind of gathering rooms where parties can be held for the people that are staying there and, and other kind of celebrations. And you're going to have, I think you're going to have a whole lot more cars. And, uh, along with, uh, with people that are volunteering in the facility, thirteen people seems woefully inadequate without volunteers to, uh, to handle laundry and to handle all of the, all of the different things. I've worked around hospitals most of my life, and, uh, I, I just can't see it. I think that, uh, you're going to be, you're going to be in a, into a terrible situation with cars and, uh, and I, I, I think that we ought to be over-prepared instead under-prepared to meet the need. Uh, it's better to have, uh, the next, the excess parking, if it can be tagged that, uh, so that, uh, families can get, indeed, would get what they're paying for. And that's access to, uh, to their loved ones that are in that facility.
Mr. Strad?
Yeah, I think that, uh, what you're showing is obviously, uh, quite a improvement over what, uh, we originally had, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, I like the idea that you shifted it over closer towards Adams. And, uh, I think, though, I really would like to see, uh, some screening of that parking. Uh, what I like to see personally myself is something that is at least three foot high, something that covers the, the hoods of the cars, uh, all along the area where the general public, as they come in, uh, as they drive by, I'm talking about as they drive by your facility. But I do like the parking in the back. I noticed that, uh, you have a kind of a walkthrough, uh, arrangement in your plan, so that the rear of the, if I may refer to it as the rear, although that seems to be where you have the majority of your parking, there are two areas that they can come into. Is that correct?
I, each other.
Well, that area there seems to be kind of an incidental area. Those two are the major areas, right?
Yeah. Those would be covered patios, um, so residents, uh, can, can go outside in a covered patio.
Where are the people when they do park? Where do they go visiting?
The visitor parking would be up in this area here. Um, there's a canopy here for pickup and drop-off, and the parking for, for visitor parking is, is up in the frontier.
What about the balance of the parking?
The balance of the parking would be, uh, in, in staff parking, um, which?
Thirteen staff?
Well, we, it, we can meet the ordinance with parking at eighty-eight. Um, where we would add?
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at the functionality of it, I'm sorry.
Right, from a functionality standpoint, th- this would be, uh, visitor parking and guest parking up in this area here, and then along the back would be staff parking.
Yeah, you said there were only thirteen staff, and I see the majority of the park along the back, along the, the east side and along the back, but that's, I'm not here.
Yeah, our, our, our comments right now, based on, uh, in factoring everything in a facility that's very similar to this, um, are that at any given point in time, there's not generally more than ten visitors at any given time, uh, in the building. That this, the second floor, the memory care unit, um, please understand that that's basically like a lockdown unit. Um, these are people that are, they definitely are not driving. Um, they don't even have access really to, to get to parts of the building where they can exit the building. It's for their safety. Um, and it's, it's a requirement, frankly.
But they still have visitors on a daily basis, most of them?
Yes, generally, uh, yes, they do, yes. And that, and that's, our calculations are that at any given time, there's time, might there be a period of time when there's more? Uh, yes, obviously that's possible. If we want to increase, uh, the number of parking spaces to meet the ordinance, we have the need to do it.
It just seems like you're, you're cramming it, and it doesn't seem to be working very smoothly, in my opinion, whatever. But we're, if it meets the ordinance, we have to approve it, right?
I guess what I would say is, is I would, I would lead towards the applicant for, uh, for knowing their business and, and, and providing examples in other areas, and they, they would be confident in what the numbers are going to be.
Yeah, ju- just counting quickly here, we have north of forty spaces that are just in this area here. So.
Mr. Mr. Crick?
Um, quick question for you. The, when you do have an overflow, let's say that fort, those, those, the main entrance I take is on the north side of the building. I consider the main, with a canopy, the drive, okay. Um, when you have an overflow situation where you have a lot of visitors coming in, they go either on that, uh, east side or that south side parking, where would they enter? Is that the entrance off the east side? Is that a little, that little white sidewalk? Does that go into a door on the east side of the building?
Yes.
Okay, so they can enter there?
This doesn't.
They can enter there?
Yeah.
Okay, and they can enter from the south side. So it's four, four entrances to the building, four, four visiting people. In other words, it's not staff-only entrance?
That, that is correct. I- I don't think that many visitors would use this. I think that they would use one of these two is most likely.
The east, west, and south doors are not lockout doors? They will be open to the public from the outside?
This right here would be through access, through, through an access, whether it be a fob or that type of connection. This one will have somebody at reception.
Visitors aren't going to have a fob?
Well, family members, we allow family members or to key in and speak to someone at a desk.
It looks like to me that those two are actually stairwells.
The...
Yep.
The ends.
This entrance right here will be, ninety percent of the visitors will be using this entrance right here. That is...
Mr. Kevler, you've alluded to a similar facility or another facility that you've been getting some of these lessons from. Could you tell us where that facility is?
It's on Bandai, just north of Thirteen Mile.
What's it called?
Windermere Park.
Oh, okay. Any other questions for the petitioner? All right, if you'd like to have a seat. This is not a public hearing, but if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to this item. See no one, bring it back to the table. Question for staff?
Yes. Do we have any facilities similar to this, with this kind of need, that have a problem with parking?
The only one that comes to mind is Heartland.
But that's not the same, that's not, I'm saying, if it has...
Specific, very, very similar to this, with a parking problem, none that I can think of.
Thank you.
Well, gentlemen, what would you like to do?
Mr. Schultz? Can I ask?
Absolutely.
Brent, something. You know my position, until we have a clean application, I'm not going to move forward with this. So, when I make my motion to postpone this, could you do us a favor and check, I believe it's Sunrise or Marriott or somebody up off Northfield, and see what their parking-to-room ratio is as it's built for the next meeting? Because that's, I'm sitting here thinking of senior care facilities in Troy, and we don't really have very many.
That's one that comes to mind. And I believe there's one up on, is there one up on Livernoy, just south of, South Boulevard also?
Yeah.
No.
Crooks and South Boulevard.
Crooks and South Boulevard. There's also, that was a Sunrise, I think, when they built it. If you could get us the room-to-parking ratios for those by the next meeting?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Schultz saying, there's, there's a facility on Northfield Parkway across the street from Troy High.
That's the first one. It's the first one I spoke to.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
I do want to let the planning commission know, we did have some discussions with the applicant about landbank parking, and they showed landbank originally. There was actually discussion of actually showing landbank parking on those where Mr. Kevler indicated along there. Those have been, that, that, that area has been sized to accommodate twelve additional parking spaces. So, one option to consider is the planning commission could dedicate that as landbank on the site plan, and if and when the opportunity for increased parking is needed, that parking can be installed at a later date. So, it's a little bit, we get less than purges now, but when needed, we can install the parking. So, that's something that the applicants should consider moving forward, and the planning commission should as well.
What would the driver for that be?
It can be, it can be city dictated, and it can also be applicant dictated. City can, can, based on complaints, based on news, based on site observation, can go and actually require them to install the parking based on the agreement done with the applicant. If the applicant feels, like, just out on note, the applicant knows their business probably better than we would, if they feel there's a parking issue, it's in their best interest to provide enough parking as well. I think if they know a parking issue, they would install the parking as well.
Mr. Shepki, do you have additional comments?
No, to me, I wanted to find, to know what the trigger was that would cause an extra parking to be installed, because I think this is woefully inadequate, woefully inadequate.
So, I'd like to make a motion to postpone.
I guess we have to ask the applicant how quickly they can have a corrected package submitted, and how quickly you guys can...
This doesn't require notification, so really, we don't need to continue to date certain. It can be left outstanding with applicant time. I think the applicant, I don't want to speak to them, I think the applicant wants, wants, in terms of the site plan itself, are they moving in the right direction where they're putting the parking as compared to the original specification, et cetera, I think they would have some comfortability in terms of that, so they can prepare a site plan for the next opportunity.
Question for Alan, please. Sue always told us we had to have a date certain. Are you okay with just postponing this until such time as a new application is submitted?
There's no reason to, to make a date certain, postpone without a date certain.
I would move to postpone this until such time as a revised site plan has been submitted, and staff and consultant has had time to review it and supply it to the planning commission.
Second.
Mr. Shepki.
Yes, I want to postpone.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Chagle?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Camden?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, public comment. For items on the agenda, see no one will move on to planning commission comments. Mr. Hudson, would you like to give us off tonight?
Go, Kevin.
Stratt?
No comment.
Kret? Kent?
Just one comment, I'm attending that training class up at the local county center there, and we just went through the master plan information, and the city of Troy's master plan was referenced a couple of times.
That's a, that's a good example.
Nothing bad. Yeah, one of the comments was that we had an unusual thing, and that was pointed at is the aging-in-place demographics aspect of that plan, so I just also pointed out that we're currently in the review process for our master plan. If you'd like an update on that, I'd like to...
Thank you. Mr. Schultz? I'm just thrilled to see the old Kmart at Maple and Livernoy as a pile of rubble. It was such a victory to see that abandoned building go away. Mr. Shep.
No, I'm glad that this situation is being looked at a little closer with the parking. I think it was so woefully inadequate, and even with the future parking places, you're going to have more drainage to account for, and I don't know if engineering, for only twelve spaces, would have to increase sores or bleeds, or what would have to happen to make that happen and make it feasible. But anyway, I'm glad that even the minimum is too small, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Camden?
Yeah.
Frank?
Yeah, not to reopen old wounds here, but, kind of, kind of a difficult, difficult item. On the one hand, there's, there's no requirement that petitioners go door-to-door or reach out and solicit input from the neighbors. On the other hand, there's kind of a, the optics are that certain people, that those, maybe some people were misled, or certain people received preferential treatment. Again, that's optics, I'm not saying, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but, so, I, I see why the planning commission, ironically, just, this is just something to think about. If, if the petitioner withdrew their application for special use tonight, just said, "We're done, here's a letter, we're formally withdrawing," they could submit a fence permit, fence or wall application tomorrow, and put that wall there.
They could also clear cut the property.
Mm-hmm, yes. So, I mean, there's definitely, there's definitely, and you have a tough job, because there's a balance here. There's no, it's not, we're not required, the planning commission is not required to take a vote, okay, who wants a wall? Who doesn't want a wall? Okay, we're going to give you a wall, we're going to jump you. That's, what we're, what you're required to do is, is, is review and approve, you know, what you feel is the petitioner's best effort at coming up with, with a plan that minimizes the impacts of what's approved. It's, and it's tough, because you've got people kind of laying in the weeds, and rightfully so, it's, they've got a massive investment. So, I understand where they're coming from as well, so, I think, I think at the end of the day, the app, it probably would have served the petitioner well to engage the neighbors earlier on, but, you know, that engagement will happen now, and we'll, we'll come up with a solution that's going to work, but it's, it's a, it's a difficult, it's a difficult item. I'm sorry, I just didn't want to...
Can I piggyback on that?
Yes.
What bothers me more than anything else is that people are going to not want that wall, and say that the majority say that they don't want that wall, and all of a sudden whistle blows, you heard the one comment, and all of a sudden, they think that the vegetation is going to actually be a sound buffer, but it's not. And that's what I'm, I'm concerned with. I don't think they realize what, what that wall really will do, and, but so be it, whatever their, whatever the commission will go with, that's what will be.
And, and the trick is, how can we, I'm sorry, like, the solution that's going to be kind of equitable for everyone, not an individual basis, but everyone collectively.
Let's focus on something about this meeting. I wasn't suggesting that we come to unanimous agreement, majority vote or anything like that, but when it's presented to us by the applicant, that there's been a compromise between the homeowners and the church, and it turns out to be two people of those homeowners, not the rest, that smells bad. And that's why I think it's good that we ask them to at least have a meeting, so their voices are heard, and then they can come back. It was a false icon, it was out there, done unintentionally, but that's what, grab my cross.
Agreed. Mr. Schultz?
The, the two people who were the homeowners and reached an agreement, knew when they bought their homes that they had seven-foot side yard setbacks. I just have a case of the chafes with them getting a sweetheart deal and the other thirteen homeowners not, because basically, these people are getting property that the church is never going to use, added to the south side of, of their homes. And when they bought those houses, they had seven-foot setbacks on one side. And I'm sorry, if something goes in next door and a six-foot wall goes up, the wall's going to be six foot, or seven foot from your house. That's, that's the, the risk you take when you buy a property on a sub-street. You don't know what's going to be going in next door to you. And my only concern is that whatever goes in there is consistent for everybody that abuts that piece of property. Two houses don't get extra landscaping and extra land, and I've made it abundantly clear, nobody's going to get extra land. Nobody's going to say, "Well, put the fence ten feet back on your property and let me have an additional ten feet of backyard for perpetuity." I'm not going to vote for that.
What bothers me is, we listened here for two hours, I mean, it was better than two hours, to every one of their comments. Now, they're going to go back and they're going to revisit the same thing? It doesn't make sense to me, forcing them to actually reexamine. They heard, they were here, they heard all the comments, they heard everyone's comment. And I agree with Mr. Schultz, there should not be any, I don't know, I, I, I'm not too happy with what we've done, forcing, I, I hate to see the church being forced to do something.
I guess I'm missing something here, Mr. Stratt. I don't know what they're being forced to do, other than talk to their neighbors. They have the final decision as to what they're going to come in and present us.
What do you think they're going to accomplish after listening for two hours? We were listening for two hours.
It doesn't matter. The process needs to go forth.
Yeah. Okay, well, they're going to do it.
I tell you what, any, anybody that I've ever worked for that was going to be abutting a residential neighborhood, any commercial, always put a first foot out there to talk to the neighbors, to see if they, you know, let them know, "We're in the neighborhood, these are what our plans are." Does everybody agree with it? No.
I've done a lot of that, too, but the main thing is, you've got fifteen people, not one person, you've got fifteen different, fifteen people that are going to have fifteen different answers.
That's not the point.
What is the point?
The point is to let them work it out, and if they can't work it out, it's up to the petitioner to say, "This is what we're proposing," and if it meets...
Approve it or don't approve.
That's right. Exactly. Yeah.
I, I thought they had done that.
Well, they had, the guy said, he only talked to three, one email, and he talked to two of the neighbors. He did not reach out to any, anybody.
Okay, we'll see when he comes back. I guess that's, that's bothering me.
Yeah, I think the compromise of chain link is a bad idea all around.
Oh, yeah.
Not going to do anything for the sound, which was one of the primary things that I thought would benefit the people around the area.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you on that.
Somebody asked me a question. Why is sound so much different than visual? We're sitting around the table saying, "You know what, it's tough. If they want to put up a wall, and it's going to be ugly, they can put up a wall." But now, we're saying, because there's kids that are going to make noise, that's not acceptable. I mean, I'm, I'm missing something here. What happens on that property, or on the other side of that property lot, if it's legal...
Well, I'd hate to be watching TV and listening to someone with the whistle blowing consistently when they're playing flag football. That, to me, would be very irritating.
I think I probably made a mistake by opening this up, because I was kind of deliberating, well, not deliberating, I started to get in specific here.
Go on, Brent. Good job.
My, my, mine was just to talk about the irony kind of in the, this wall, the wall, how the wall seems to be an issue, but if it was separate, it's, it's an application to the building department, and they put up a wall.
But we have to address the way that they want it.
Exactly. Yep.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Meeting adjourned.